I apologize for my tardiness this morning. All right, it is nine now at oh one. Time for our uh regular scheduled meeting April first. Um with that, we'll stand for prayer. Oh, we have a public here, I'm sorry. Uh yeah, sorry. That's what happened when you're being late, so we're gonna open our public hearing, do we have a motion to start the public hearing? I just am probably moving in second that we start the public hearing. All in favor, let me know what's going on. All right, motion care, public hearing is official. All right, the first thing we have, do we have a motion for alcohol suspension or revocation for family food mark? Do we have a motion to hear that, um particular revocation? There's been a problem moving second that we hear that uh revocation, all right? Now, the rules of a public hearing is people can't even speak during a public hearing. So the particular business is here. Before we go forward and make any comments or decisions, you can talk about what's going on if you're here. Yes, yes.
We have uh the police department, they present information on what happened and being the the offenders.
Sure. I'm assuming police department. Chief, do you wanna kind of present what happened, kinda sort of public will understand? And so what we're we're gonna do here is, well, I'll let the chief explain what happened and why we're having these hearings with the business involved, businesses involved.
Yeah, so on February twenty sixth, um police department along with agents with the department of revenue, we conducted a undercover operation uh targeting under, excuse me, underage alcohol sales uh to minors. Um we had received several complaints from various stores in the city and uh we actually put together a list of twenty five, that we didn't receive complaints from all twenty five, however, we didn't wanna just isolate uh certain stores, we wanted to do kind of a broad um operation. And uh with that operation, uh out of the twenty five, five stores were actually sold alcohol to the undercover agent. Um the way it works is basically, um the partner revenue uh has uh a minor who works with them and uh their agents go in with that minor and they try to sell alcohol or buy alcohol. And uh again, five of the stores out of the twenty five sold alcohol to the minor. And I I do have some things about specific stores or some concerns. Um I guess I don't know how you wanna address it, like when you address the store, do you want?
Yes, sir, let's do that. Memory can be short. Um so we can start with the first one over here, which is family food mark.
All right, again, I I have some concerns and uh so as such, uh there is considerable questions first off regarding the actual owner of the store. You have a Ms. Knight that's listed as owner, uh she is often unreachable. Additionally, the store manager seems to have better understanding of business operations than the listed owner. She happens to be the contact when it comes to questions regarding their licensing, whether it be the alcohol license or the actual store license. Additionally, this store has received numerous complaints concerning drug and gang activity, potential illegal gambling, and sales to alcohol to minors. It is known to be a gathering point for gang, for gangs in the area and is suspected of being um used to conceal stolen items from like entering autos and things like that. The shelves, in my opinion, and again, this is just my opinion, are poorly stocked and there is a persistent smell of marijuana throughout the store, that is actual fact. This location appears to be the hub for criminal activity and during the planning of this operation, it was also discovered that the store was operating without a valid alcohol license, uh which had expired on December thirty first of twenty twenty four. Despite being instructed not to sell alcohol, they continued to do so. Furthermore, they failed to submit the required paperwork for their business licensing, so there was some confusion when it comes to that. Um they had been contacted on multiple occasions and regarding these issues, um however, they were uncooperative. I'm requesting that uh you not grant them their alcohol license. I would also recommend based on the criminal activity and the issues that we're having eating around that area that you consider even shutting the store down.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Go ahead with that.
I'm sorry.
I said we'll handle that.
No worries, no worries. All right, so I I'm guessing they're not even present today? Yes. All right, do you, would you like to say anything on these accounts so we can have a full understanding of what's going on? Uh you you wanna come up here and grab my mic so we can hear you, uh some people have a hard time hearing hearing you.
Good morning, everyone. Okay, uh the thing is that um we've been trying to contact with the city of the clerk of the city since uh twenty fourth of November, we have tried to submit the application for alcohol for the renewal. And Brianna was the one, she was scheduled for the fingerprints, uh the owner of the store. And uh she came in here, but she was being told that you don't have the fingerprints now. You gotta be receiving a callback to have the fingerprints, then you can come in and have the fingerprints for the renewal process. So she kept calling.
I kept calling and uh I left messages and I received a call back saying when I need to come with the fingerprint.
What number were you calling, ma'am?
Um I can't remember, I can't.
Do you have it in your phone, remember the time, cause that would be very important to to have with you? And just to be sure, we got it right, so ma'am, what's your name in the green button on the right?
Miriam, I'm the manager of the store.
Miriam, you are the manager, Miriam, okay, manager. And ma'am on the left and the?
Brianna.
Brianna? So manager, Miriam and owner Brianna. Ms. Knight, I'm assuming is Brianna?
Yes.
Okay, Brianna is Ms. Knight, okay, Ms. Knight. All right, and I I just wanted to give a little background information, they have the the most context for this. Um do either of you or both of you live actually in Cordeal?
No.
No, uh so let's start that, Ms. Miriam, where do you live?
I live in Macon.
Macon, Georgia. Ron Robinson, central Georgia, all right. That's helpful, then the reason I'm asking because if if you kind of live here, another process and procedure that would help as well, okay. I just wanted that context, thank you.
All right, then uh we reached back to the court again and uh she was being told from the sheriff department because we were not getting the right direction from the uh the office of city clerk and the assistant city clerk, we were not getting a clear picture that what is the next step because we are not getting the fingerprints done. So uh we were being told that you will be contacted uh sooner. You will receive a mail in the mailbox uh to receive the invoice for the alcohol license renewal. Whereas we haven't received.
Give me one moment, I may stop and ask questions when we do that, you are, just for context. How long have you all been in business in Cordeal at this location? Specific in Cordeal at this location? Three years?
Yeah, three years.
So you didn't have a problem before?
Never.
Never, okay, okay. Who, go ahead, you're sorry. Who did you speak to when you called the newer signs here at the city clerk's office?
Um I never could hit anyone. And then I I was supposed to be speaking with Ms. Janice and I left messages, but I never got a return.
Who told you to call, I think you said you would call, you talked to somebody?
Yeah, they transferred me to the person I needed to speak with.
And who was that?
That was Ms. Janice.
You spoke to Ms. Janice?
No, I never got to speak with her, I just left messages, but the people that transferred me there told me that's who I would speak with about the the matter.
Right, so who told you that you would receive something there? That that's what?
Ms. Janice.
You said you did talk to Ms. Janice?
Right, but that was later on down the line.
Okay, all right. Give me one moment, and you don't have any of those dates? Okay, I I would just say this, cause I've been through a number of hearings, if you know anything about me here in this city. Just to help you out, anytime you come to anything here, have your dates, have when you made calls because we have to sit here and verify this information. Uh like have everything down in details because w- when you say I don't know any things like that, that doesn't sound convincing. So that's just, and that's what everybody out here, so when you're here and come up, make sure you have your your dates and your, you know, when you did whatever down in writing, um because that's gonna be very important, so. But please start, you know.
We will start loading down when we are receiving the calls or voicemail. But the last call we received were.
Give me one moment, Commissioner Shepherd.
My question is, if they receive something in the phone call, they made something in the phone call, why does someone come in in person to speak to someone?
Okay, yeah, uh that's, I have the answer for that. I was getting the renewal for occupational license, I was here to pick up the occupational license from the assistant clerk. And I, she directed me to Ms. Janice that she got the renewal license for occupation for the same Valero. And while just picking up that, I just asked that what about the alcohol license, why you are not receiving any update about alcohol license? That's how I got to know, and then I told Brianna that hey, you better contact uh them about the renewal of alcohol license because it's been like more than a month and two that you are not doing that. And she kept calling every day. I have her and mine text messages, I'm reminding her because she's busy, I'm busy too, but I am the main person who's doing all these management things of paperwork. So I have to remind her again and again, hey, did you call, did you check with alcohol license invoice? So I have those uh text messages with her that every day I'm reminding that she's calling to the city to get the invoice for the renewal.
So I guess my next question would be, after not making contact with anybody from the city, why did you all continue to sell alcohol?
We had the city uh state license and the last time we got a call, that was sixth of December. And stating that you got two days to pick up the license on eighth of uh December coming in. I told Brianna uh that did you receive a call, she was busy, she got a voicemail saying the same thing. And I got the second call and I picked up the call that your license gonna be ready in two days. Eighth of December, you have to come and pick it up, otherwise you won't be able to pick it up.
Do you have that voicemail?
Uh she 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 should have it.
Y'all don't watch Court TV? I'm only there to love this Judy judge, I'm just like, it it ain't the same thing, but you just can't come up here and say we did that because we, I'll say this, I am not against you, our job is uncover what happened to him because we don't want any business uh we don't want most businesses closing down, they're doing everything they're supposed to do, but you are already kind of not doing what you're supposed to do, so, but you can't just come up here and say things and you know.
Trust me, sir, I have two more locations in Macon and I'm managing, I didn't have no issue before that. And I'm running those two locations.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. One more question for you, when you, since you've been in business for two years, three years, in the years past, what was your procedure in obtaining your license, business license?
We definitely don't wanna break the rule or law for the city of the state.
Right, so what did you follow in the years past in order to get the license? Cause that's that's, but I guess my, the reason I'm asking that is because knowing that it's on December eighth, that you have not picked up that license and the year had to come to a close, you still continue to sell alcohol. Why did you continue to sell alcohol, knowing that you have a proper license?
That was our our like uh fault that we didn't reach on the time. I was like nine months pregnant, I just still have my newborn twenty days.
And I understand that, but so even though you're, but you're not the only employee, is what I'm going with. So therefore, if you could not go and you had that date, then someone else could have come and picked it up or reached out or the owner herself.
She was in Alana and I came back on ninth.
Ninth of?
Ninth of December, but before that, this thing happened, that the uh my worker, the my volunteer who didn't know that we have the expired license, he sold the license uh alcohol.
But now.
In just one day, after the call. My my worker at the store.
Worker at the store.
And he was being uh arrested as well, he was here.
Okay, but that he sold on December the ninth?
I think on eighth.
December eighth, but now this date that you gave us is February twenty sixth. So that's what I'm saying, see that that license expired on thirty first. If your license expired on the thirty first and you were still doing it on twenty six.
Oh, sorry, the February, yeah, February he was being arrested, I have the invoice, you have the invoice for the the Kumar who was being arrested on the, I ha- I'm mismixing the those two dates sometime.
No, it's no problem, I I just wanna make sure we're clear.
When you came last time, you released him. We have that paper in the car.
That's your question, what? What is your passion, calling people, come in there, do you ask identification?
Yeah, we we ask for the ID. We ask for the ID for tobacco and alcohol.
He said ask for ID, so, do you have false ID, do the young ones have false ID or?
I am not aware because that person is unable to speak clear English, so I have asked multiple questions and he was confused, he was shattering.
Yes, sir.
If you're referring to this operation, no, they they don't, we we go in there with a minor, uh we have an agent standing by for safety, obviously, and the minor just attempts to buy an alcoholic beverage. They were not questioned for any ID, they were just sold the alcohol.
Is there also a a signature for cigarette sale, tobacco sale?
It's a separate entity, the partner revenue deals with both, but they have two different divisions.
But it makes me to be caught for the ah uh tobacco products as well?
They do, yes, but with this operation didn't cover tobacco, it was just alcohol.
And and so this store has been in operation for three years?
Yeah.
Just, how long have you been manager in this store?
Since the with Brianna, since three years.
So ever since?
Twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three, okay. So, okay, all right, and you opened in twenty twenty three, okay, all right. Now, my question is, where I am perplexed when I believe the same thing, Commissioner, I almost don't wanna speak for him, but all right, so we we're dealing with like two violations here. One outside of the license, which you all are saying that you got a call and say you may have, we'll leave, we'll just set that to the side, given the benefit of the doubt. But the biggest thing is, you all selling to a a minor.
Yeah, that's that's our, that's my work before, that's we accept that, that was a big fault he did it.
You know, it's.
And he paid for it.
It's the business fault.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it's, you can't push it off. Uh when you the manager and owner, it's the business fault, or what have you. It may be training, it may be stressing things over and over, uh and uh conveniently, that worker is not here, right? So you know, that's one of the oldest tricks in the book, almost blaming on somebody that's not present.
No, it's it's not his fault, it's our fault.
Okay, thank you, so thank you for that accountability. As the manager, what uh what happened after February the twenty sixth, correct? And that happens, what conversation did you all have with the worker or everybody employed at this location?
We alert everybody on my other locations too that, hey, you gotta see the ID because no, 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 big no to the minor, no. And trust me, the the miners literally banged the window and they like abused to the worker. When he says no, when he says no to the miners, they literally banged the window and they abuse and they walk out the store. Two times we had a broken door at the store, just because that.
But yes, that's not this February twenty sixth, please?
No, that's afterwards.
Okay. After February twenty sixth?
That afterward, like every day, my my people are facing these problems, that the miners are reacting very bad.
Yes, sir.
Even though before also.
That's why we've been receiving complaints is because that's where they go to get their alcohol. And so you change, you change the way you do things, all of a sudden there's an issue, because that's why the miners now want their alcohol.
But at the same time, after that point, there was not a license to sell alcohol, so that should not have been. But I tell you, that's challenging, that didn't work, they didn't actually pick up, so their side is, I got a call, we have all licenses agreeing with it, but put myself in that shoe. We got a call, December sixth saying we have a license, we just not able to pick it up. So what we gotta see here, under word impression, because that's why we went on the voicemail, because under word impression that you think you have alcohol license on the right, and we gotta establish that at this point, like if they was under impression that they had license and they have a voicemail to back it up, then that's a different thing. But then also, if they have that, they will also have the invoice showing how much they were to be paid and that would be, their proof would be their check of what they paid. Right, that'd be the most reasonable.
That's the twenty seven.
And this is the citation. That's the citation, yeah. Yes, sir.
I think the city's got to be inquired at some point about all of these issues, about when the license is issued and where they operate with that license. The only thing that any of these people noticed about, just in the hearing is about, is the sale of alcohol on February twenty seventh.
Yeah.
That's before us, and none of these other things are in this hearing.
Yeah, but it it uh what I would say, um city attorney is, that um that may be the case, or what have you, but if some, we get to ask questions about all the things because um it says suspension license, but it's a hearing, so they get to bring up, and we're not lawyers or judges, so we get to ask questions about what's going on.
No, sir, they're not responsible for anything, whatever.
I hear you, city attorney, I got you, thank you for that. All right, so as our city attorney has instructed, uh let's let's sit this aside. But that's a good basis, um yeah, um. But also, this is a revocation here too, so, but so we need to establish some other things. Okay. Since you all had the issue of selling to a minor, I heard you say that you have constant conversation. What specific conversation did you have after February twenty sixth with store employees about checking ideas you said, um saying specific conversation, what did that look like?
They are following it strictly, they're following the not selling the tobacco and al- alcohol to the minor, not the big no.
Okay, so let me try to say it better. Did you have a sit down with everybody in part of that store and what was that conversation?
Okay, we had told them that, hey, this is the big problem we are facing because we all are part of it. Maybe we haven't had the word with you before and maybe you are, you've forgotten what was your duty behind the counter as a cashier, so make sure, don't put us and you in the trouble. That we have to have follow that, not selling alcohol and tobacco products to the minor at all.
And is that employee still employed?
They are following, yeah, the.
They still employed?
Yes.
How many total employees do you have?
Uh they are actually volunteer with us, they've been working at a different store. So we are switching them off and on here and there.
So how many do you have?
Uh I have one here.
So you have one employee there. What's your hours of operation?
It's twenty four hours, so my brother comes in the night as well.
You're all twenty four hours?
Yes, sir. My brother comes from Warner Robben to here.
Uh hold on, let let me back up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ooh, Jesus, um.
I have one person who's working in the daytime.
Okay, hold on, hold on, I forgot my phone. You're here, I'm sorry, you're right this. You have one employee and you're all twenty four hours?
Yes, sir. So you're not getting it, one person, the Kumar.
I get what you're saying, but and and not to diminish what you're saying, but the probability of having one employee that works twenty four hours and you're only setting basis, we would get.
Yes, sir.
Is is a lot, and.
My brother works ten hours in the night and the other person works fourteen hours.
So it's not one employee, that's two employees, that's what I'm asking.
But my brother is not working like, on the like of working, working like that way. He's volunteering for our store, like the family business.
So ma'am. So if he's there, if your brother is there and a minor comes in and he sells him the alcohol, he's an employee that just sold the minor the alcohol. So he is an actual employee because volunteer is what I'm being paid and I I'm still there in the role because as a person coming in, I don't know if he's volunteering, I'll be a soul, so he's still an employee. Well, see that, see that, that's the point of, I don't know if we're supposed to go down that road now, but that's another point of clarity. The owner and the managing and then, you know, the family business are rotating, you all own this one store, is that correct?
Well, I have one in Macon.
So you own two stores, so your employees travel from Macon to Cordeal on a rotating basis to to uh?
We are managing like that way, the family of own cases.
Okay.
Because she's my sister-in-law as well.
Okay, um, all right, so you all had a conversation with um with the employee, so which, who who sold that call to the minor, the brother who's volunteer or the other guy?
The other guy, Kumar.
Kumar, so.
Lali Kumar.
Okay, and, okay, so that's not the brother? And is that the brother you married too? Oh, okay, um. So he got relatives at all?
No.
All right, no, I mean the other brother that volunteered, that's not Kumar?
No.
Okay, okay, all right.
If you're fluent in English, Mr. Kumar, is he very fluent?
He's not very fluent.
Um, okay. All right, well, how do you, what do you, what do y'all think about all this, Commissioner? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh you all, uh according to the ordinance, you all have thirty days to render a decision. So you know, that would give you all time to think about if there's something that you wanna do and you all can address it at the next meeting, but you know, whatever the purpose of the commission is.
Are you, are you all still?
Yes.
Are they, are you all selling alcohol?
Not at all, this that's still in the cooler for that and we moved out alcohol in the back, back of the locking cooler.
Thank y'all, any further questions? So the way it looks is, we have thirty days to make a decision on on this particular.
I don't know why I asked this question, is that first offense?
It is.
First offense, okay.
And we're sorry again, I mean, we 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 know we are at war. And we're sorry again, I mean, we, we, we know we are at war.
Thank you for saying that, thank you. Alright, next is Cordial Food Mart. Um, yes, sir.
Alright, uh, the Cordial Food Mart was again, um, part of this operation, and it was found that, uh, they again, they sold alcohol to a minor as well. I don't have any reservations like I did with the other store on this one, um. You know, they were issued a citation, they also have some sanctions from the state.
Alright.
Sir, what a topic is for our education. Could you get a street for these stores as well, like, you know, like.
Let's see here, flip, here, flip the page. The one to your right, uh, yeah, yeah, that's the one, yeah, yeah.
Oh, the address, so this is.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's, that's what they do, call on our hand, but, um, just.
Yeah, we.
What's the address? Three sixteen, East Twenty Fourth Avenue, three sixteen, East Twenty Fourth Avenue.
Three sixteen, East.
East Twenty Fourth Avenue. And the first one, uh, will narrow six oh one, East Eighth Avenue.
Six oh one, East Eighth, okay.
Yes.
City somewhere.
Six oh one, East Eighth Avenue.
Good morning, respected, respected commissioners. And, uh, lovely to be here. Uh, I'm Diddy Josie and, uh, the owner of the Cordial Food Mart. First of all, I'm very, very sorry with all the commissioners that my employee overlooked and he did a mistake. And as, I'm the owner and, uh, as the state and, uh, city ordinances. I'm also responsible for that, uh, because he's a member, uh, or he's, as is the employee. Uh, he's responsible and the same responsibility for that. And so I'm here for, from two thousand nineteen. And I have, uh. Nothing happened before like that, this is my first offense. And I have a clear history of no violations. And no penalties and any citations before that, so he overlooked. So what he do is that, whenever we hire an employee, so we give the training. Uh, I received forty three pages of, uh, city ordinance. And we gave them to read out, so what may be the consequences if you don't follow rules and regulations of the state and the city. So we are very, I'm very strict on that, and I follow all those things, so on that day I was not present. So he just working for about four months. And I have three employees, and they never had anything wrongs on that. And, uh, so. After I get the citation. I was very shocked, uh, the next day, I mean, the incident happened, the next day I came in the morning. And I saw the police officers in front of the door, I was shocked and said, sir, can I help you anything? And they said, hey, uh, one of your employee sold alcohol to the minors, I was shocked, and who's that guy? And he's the, he's, he's the white guy, and immediately the guy came, I called him and came out and he advocated, yes, I did wrong. I was misjudged or overlooked. And so, and after what I did is that, I take the precautions, strict measures for that. Uh, we had a POS system, if you scan any shards or any alcohol, then it pop up. So what's your debt to block, right? So I don't know why, but he said he was so busy, and I was stressful on that day because he works ten hours a day. And he just live in front of the store, so then I, again, I trained him. And, uh, we assure you that it will not happen again, uh, because this is a illegal things by the laws. And I'm very, very aware of, of the state and the city rules and regulations. And I will have to abide all those laws, and, uh, the Pickersons died at two. So before, uh, after that, and before he's dead, I would give some things. So we give a training like that, and we put all those things. Like that, that's for the even, for the customers that we done sell alcohol. So we have posted so many places, and when you scan like this, so it will give you the purpose. The date, right? And I have one employee, so he got the, even the certification like this. And I'm what to do to get this certificate mandatory to all of my employees?
Okay.
So that they cannot repeat. Again, and, uh, it will happen again. Uh, my name is Diddy Josie, D I D Y A, Diddy Josie, yeah. And so I especially request you, uh, this is my first offense, I'm taking all the corrective measures. And I assure you that if not happy again, so I request you not to suspend and revoke license. Uh, because this is, what's it, is the, is just my hand to mouth. And I have only one son, so he's doing, he wants to be a doctor, he's, uh, in, uh, uh, UGA, he's in pre-med psychology.
That's a nice choice.
So I live in Warner Robben, so I, every day I commit one fall from here.
But I have one, two questions, sir. My first question is, how long have you been in this Cordial?
So I love you.
Huh?
Uh, in five years?
Five years.
Yeah, four thousand nineteen year.
Okay, and, and one thing, sir, I learned about him, he said, I reviewed the cameras to see what happened. So that, you know, he wasn't a conscientious person, but.
And I was very, uh, concerned, and after I get the citation, uh, I came here to meet the janitor. And I call, I think so too, because I'm worried, but I can sell alcohol lot, I don't want to do any mistake. And then after final that, I call, uh, man two.
Yes.
And, and finally we got that, okay, you can sell it, I called the police department, and then finally I go, okay, you can sell it, because we had recording. Again, I, I apologize for my, on behalf of my employee and my business.
Thank you for taking it serious, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Means a lot. Alright. You good on that one?
Yes, sir.
Alright, next is, um, Party Shop. Two P's.
Right, it's the same thing with the Party Shop, um, again, they sold alcohol to the undercover, um, minor. Don't have any reservations for them, many issues.
Uh, Party Shop is. Two zero four West Twenty Fourth Avenue.
Alright, uh, they here. How you doing, sir? Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Tell me your answer, um. Whatever.
Yes, mistake or mistake, you know.
So, um, we'll ask the regular questions. How long you been in business, how long employ you actually?
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years, alright, and the person who made the mistake, how long have they been employed?
I have a mistake.
Oh, you made a mistake?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so that answer would be fourteen years too, I'm assuming, alright, um. Well. Uh, first offense, alright, alright. How do we rectify the mistake moving forward? How do we not make the mistake moving forward?
For me, it was first time, first time I got a mistake like that.
Okay, but how do we not make it again, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, I remember that we, first time, so there's the, uh, mine like this somewhere, like, uh, some order, a mine over there. And I, I know that I can, I have one there. People leave, I, I know that I got big mistake.
Right, right. Is there anything that you can do, because, um. My question goes to, I get it, mine laps, get busy, we all get there, but this is a violation. And so my question is, and not saying it's never gonna happen again, because none of us perfect. What are, we're gonna do to try to make sure that it won't happen again, though? What are little steps that you can take, um, to make sure it won't happen again?
Yeah, I'm looking for every time it's a minor, looking for each of the minors, you see, and ID, without ID, no sample.
Do you have any like reminders on the register, like, you know, check IDs, what's your scan system look like?
Now the ID like this. They, every day like, they didn't change for that.
Right.
Yeah, so I got it, we put in a, like, ID right now, so.
Okay, and you're a primary, anybody else work the register as well? Are you the only one that's behind the register ringing people out?
I, my son too.
Your son too?
Yeah, my son coming.
Okay, alright, so what is, what's, is the business doing to not do this? Like, and the reason I'm asking because see, if it's the first time, I, I get a first offense. Uh, but what I'm concerned about is that it may not necessarily always be, you know. When people get caught, they get caught, that doesn't mean this the only time they're doing it. And so I wanna be clear what I'm saying, because if. We're alert to one instance, but if it becomes a cultural thing where you get busy and the hustle and bustle things. And you just, you know, going through scanning, and before you know it's minor has this, you know, alcohol, and God knows, we have a lot of issues with minors. Um, in, in this city, uh, enough, we don't, definitely need them to be drunk and create a crime, um. So my question is, and I don't wanna belabor this, but my question is. What are you doing to, um. Not make that mistake again, you and the rest of the people that rang people out?
Never before like you can say anything, never ever, I'm promising.
I think what, I think what my chairman from, will correct him, that you, there's some kind of interest education to teach your employees as well as yourself. You need to tell us that A, B, C, we're not gonna, we're gonna have classes, we're gonna stress, uh, employees that. We're not gonna be selling them hard, everybody come in if necessary, you gotta have some kind of protocol, alright, sir?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're gonna put some type of protocol that you're gonna ensure us that you won't continue to do this. Because it, it, like you said, you got, oh, one time and more times have we let it slide, you know, through your store, so we wanna push your protocol. What do you suppose you're doing with it, to alleviate this problem?
And maybe to leaving the point of, um, Mr. Josie, looking at stuff that he just shared with us to emulate some of the stuff he had. Because he has a very detailed plan as to, you know, what he, what he's trying to do, so that might be, um. A good example of, of what you would need to look at doing. Because, uh, as the chairman said, you know, we would want to think that it won't happen again, but we have to be realistic that it could happen again. And if it happens again, it would help us to see that you've made some steps from this time. To if it happens again, that, you know, you try to prevent it from, you know, protect itself. And really, when we think about what's being done, we're talking about protecting our communities, but we also protecting you as a business owner. Because this could destroy what you take to be your livelihood if this happens this way. So that's why it's important that we know that you're making every step, that you're taking every step that you can to, uh, prevent this from happening again.
And also, sir, we know that this is a liquor store, not a convenience store as well.
So, so a little bit heavier?
Yeah.
Brown make you frown. So, so it's a little bit heavier, then like, oh, you, uh, you know. And, and, and so what, what we're at, sir, is, um, if you can get something to us and just, it can be short or whatever, just. Rectify, I did these things to make sure it won't happen again. We have thirty days, just please give, we don't wanna see any business shake down. Because, uh, the address and location, I know they provide, uh, um, you know, uh, in the location they are, um, people who may walk. And, you know, so I appreciate your business being open in the locations that they are, or we have you. But we have a duty to, you know, we have a duty to make sure that things are running accordingly with the law and ordinances and everything. And so if you can within, uh, get something to say, this is what we've done to make sure, um. Cause none of us getting any younger, and our minds will slip. But mind slipping can have you back here as your second offense, and we don't want that. Uh, cause we, we like to think that, you know, it won't happen again, it won't happen again. Uh, but it, it, it definitely can, and, you know, like I said, even between you and your son, I don't wanna become a culture. Because people normally, um. Do what they see, you can get all the training in the world sometimes, but if someone's looking at someone else skip steps. If it depends on the person, they may start skipping steps too, and then that becomes a cultural thing in your business practice. And that's what we're trying to safeguard against, or what have you, so that, that's it, I don't have anything else for Mr. Patel. Thank you, sir. Alright, um, next we have O M J LLC, Joes.
And Joes is located at thirteen zero five South Joe Grant Drive.
Thirteen.
Zero five, South Joe Grant Drive.
And we all know Joes. Yes, sir.
Alright, well, like with these other businesses, um, got, um, the operation basically sold alcohol to underage, uh, to a minor. Um, but like one of the other stores, I do have some, some concerns, and it might be outside of the scope for this hearing, however. Um, I believe that, you know, from a law enforcement or public safety standpoint, it would, uh. It's my, I guess, duty in so many ways to basically express my concerns to the commission while I have this opportunity. Um, obviously, we're here for underage alcohol sales, however, the store has received, this is one of the stores that we receive numerous complaints on for drug and gang activity. As well as underage alcohol sales, is also known to be a gathering point for local gangs and a hub for criminal activity. Uh, we have evidence that drugs are being sold from this location. As a matter of fact, on the twenty seventh, when we were serving the citations for this very, uh, offense. Uh, behind the counter were digital scales and baggies, um, associated with a lot of drug sales. And people were able to go back and forth from behind the counter to access this scale as well as those baggies. Um. We found this, uh, a long whip, not just digital scale, but there was also residue from marijuana and cocaine that was on that scale. Historically, this store has served as a headquarters, again, like I said, for criminal activity a few years ago. The police department, this is before I got here, the police department successfully petitioned for its closure due to these ongoing issues. Following that closure, we noticed a significant decline in calls for service in the area. However, after the store was later granted the business license again, and the call volume again rose. Given the current situation and the store's past, I believe it poses a significant detriment to the community. Uh, they were given another chance and failed to improve, we continuously received complaints, uh, from the public. Uh, they were given another chance and failed to improve, we continuously receive complaints uh from the public regarding criminal activity at this location. Based on the crime statistics and the volume of calls that we have, it is clear that there are serious problems. Therefore, I do request that uh you deny the application for the alcohol license and even consider revoking their business license.
Alright, thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning, how you doing, sir?
Uh, on that day, my bird was at work, he was feeling well, I guess he wasn't paying attention enough to see who all was in the store. Cause we don't let nobody allow back there in the kitchen. He was busy that day, he was moving too fast. That's really all I have to say.
How many employees are you there?
Well, two, my dad and my son. Seven thirty to uh twelve AM. Seven thirty AM to twelve AM.
What what what's the hours again, sir?
Seven thirty AM to twelve AM.
And what stairs have you turned?
He would just say he had ease, every time he just slipped his mind. He was moving too fast, busy sick.
Oh, go ahead, sorry. When was your license, when when was the business license to reopen, give it back? The business license had been suspended, but when 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 it be last?
This was back in with the alcohol.
It was when we first came in, so I mean, it was twenty two, it was twenty twenty two. And you you also sell food?
Yes, sir. Like chips. Roasters or like that what kind of foods?
Well, I know when you said your bros in the kitchen, I was just trying to figure out.
No, that we just, the kitchen is for us to go.
Again. Neutral fare. Wait. February twenty six. What conversation had been had about rectifying correctness problem moving forward?
I told them we got ID every time, we got the. Uh, a half all done, that's since the date and everything, we got an ID to make sure he doesn't. Can't slip his mind, cause I never had a problem. Just slipped his mind.
Let me ask you another question, do you card people coming in your store?
What do you mean card coming in?
If they don't have, we send them back.
If they don't have what?
ID. They don't have the ID, we tell them, can't sell.
Alright, okay, okay, I was just making sure you weren't current people walking in the store and doing about anything, okay, uh. Okay, um. So. It has been asked that we suspend your occupational license. What do you have to say to that?
Danny wasn't paying attention, so my mother slipped in while he was busy.
No, 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 I mean to some of the claims. Supported evidently by the police chief. We're being asked to suspend your business license, not just your alcohol license, meaning close down. What do you have to say to that? Because see, we got thirty days and this, we probably will reach back out to hearing and fame from you. So I'm asking you, what do you say to that?
It's at least own because that's the only business we have that's been getting enough money for our living. And we tell everybody to go, but they just slip up out of nowhere, come out of nowhere, and everybody comes together. We can't tell everybody no, and when we're busy here too, and tell them, keep getting them out.
Miss, what do you mean when you say tell them they can't be there, I mean?
That's some people try to hang out, but when people run in like at the same time, busy busy. Maybe doing live, we don't pay attention, it slips slips our mind, we're taking this customer, checking on this customer. And then someone's back here doing something, but we catch them, we tell them, get out, don't come back. Close the door.
Why not? You can hear the wrong obvious answer, I just want you to answer that question. You have time, say, no, Lord.
We do. At first, when I had business in my name, I called the police three times, people run away with some state, see the police, then the police say, call them back. Every time, people go away, call them back, go away, call them back, I can't keep calling the police until they come back.
You're just in particular a bad, uh, and that's what I'm trying to piece out because. When I grew up, that store was very important to us, it used to be owned by the Carters. And I used to leave head, start my cousin Pip, he used to pick me up, he used to take me to get little pink cookies in a brown bag. And everything, some of y'all know what I'm talking about, and so, um, you're in a bad location. That's not particularly your fault, uh, but. How you handle that becomes the onus of the owner. Yeah, um. These are serious claims, so. And and uh uh. It's a part of the back my tongue. Part, I I understand part of the issue is the location you're in, you're right there in the midst of, you know. Um, a lot that goes on, but I know it doesn't help that part of the gang activity and what I. Pretty much said in the beginning, that you have somebody of statute living right across the road that also encourage those activities. And so I'll be honest with you, I know that doesn't help, because I see them around that store just as much as the associated gang members. And so I wanna have a clear conversation about while we're post opponents on this. Uh, man, we have a commissioner that stirs up, a suspended commissioner that stirs up a lot of that stuff. Right around his neighborhood as well, so if you put yourself in his shoes, where you're trying to do all of this. Uh, and I don't know what you're trying to do, to be honest, I run a walking job, I know sometime. And when I didn't, I stopped being, and there's always people around there, but. I do know it's, it doesn't help to be in a situation where you're you're there in that location. And then the gang activity around you, and then it seems like it's being encouraged by someone who sits in these seats as well. I know that doesn't help, but I will also say. That uh and 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 most of us ain't gonna talk in this room, I believe having a full contextual conversation, um. You got to clean that up, because you are on. Uh, and. Letting us know, writing us letters, or getting in contact, you know, when things are not going right. I I tell people constantly, like when they call me, which I said, that you make a complaint, that you put them right. Because otherwise, we have no way of validating that, so if you're having these issues and you're doing everything, file complaints, come down here, say this is happening. I I get it, um, but this. The lottery, the 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 activities that going on in and around that s- store that area is very concerning. Um, and you know. Have have you all had any fault or efforts in trying to address that? And what have those efforts look like? Like, I know you say you call the police, they'll come out, but anything were, what conversations do you have? With the people hanging around and being hold that, let me ask you, are you afraid to have conversations with the people hanging around?
I had a multiple conversations with them, most of them that were doing. It got to some point that we had to fight.
Had to do what?
Fight.
Fight, you yourself?
Me and myself.
Okay.
So. Uh. Some of them are locked up now. But. Most of them are really daring, more for my dad, cause he can't move around, and the rest, I don't know where they come from. Cause when I was there. Most of them were gone, so I can't really explain, I'm at another store now.
Chairman.
Yes.
The last time they appeared for the commission, they had said they were gonna close that store when they opened the store on South Street.
Yeah, but the business hasn't picked up on South Street yet, so I can't really close everything, cause everything money we make at Joe's is going into the business in seven.
I understand that, but. So at some point, your goal is to, when the store is set to become profitable. Your goal is to close Joe's on twenty fourth, do it right on twenty fourth. But you need to make that money, cause I did hear you, um, that's in, that's how your family make your money. But you just got to wait, they're trying to. See when that store picks up. And I commend that effort, I commend that effort. Yes, sir, Chief.
Since I've been here, again, I don't know when these efforts started, calling police and things like that, but I am not aware that that is the case, uh, since I've been here. Um, we have sat down with prison soldiers in this community and have discussed ways to improve security, and it's been successful. Uh, you look at the Legion, there's a lot of things going on with that, and you look at um the other club that we have, um. Deluxe, the same, very same thing, they they have the same similar crowd, things like that, but there's no issues, they came and were proactive. Um, with Joe's, they have not been proactive, um, I'm not saying that they don't call the police, but from what I remember and what I've seen in our statistics that they do now. Uh, we normally are there because of crime that's in and around the area. I understand the area and I understand, you know, the situation, but, you know, at some point. There needs to be some accountability and efforts taken, in my opinion, by the owner to try to fix this issue as well. And again, we're more than willing to support them, however, it almost seems like they fostered this. This uh criminal activity, again, you finding things behind the counter with residue on it. And baggies sitting right there, to me, it seems like you're encouraging.
So are there steps to, are there steps to improve security around the business? I mean, I guess the question we have, you all face steps to to do.
Not security.
Why not?
Everything we call in is going to the next store, we're gonna have enough money to fund the security.
That's what I thought you said, I just wanna be, I didn't wanna make the assumption, um, I didn't, I didn't wanna make the assumption. Alright, uh, anything else, I heard you brother said that conversation. Take this in consideration as well, um. Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I will say it came to my attention that a lot of these employees are working extremely long hours. Uh, ten hours, and I actually worked at a convenience store when I went to Georgia Southern. And uh I know how that can look, uh, especially around alcohol and uh lottery and and beer sales. Or what have you, so one thing we may wanna consider is looking at the. Long hours that these people are are actually, and I know some are owners that work in hours. But uh they've been asked to work a screen long hours standing on their feet, you know, um. So that may be a condition, if I'm standing on my feet, my mind's gonna slip at some point too, so, um. I I don't know how you all work that out, figuring out peak timing, I'm gonna break out on up, and we have, I know. Uh, if the laws haven't changed, you technically don't really have to give breaks to, especially if they're nice, but. And maybe a nice thing to do for these people to keep in your business, so that that's my two cents, whatever it's worth, uh, but yeah, so thank you. And alright, we have Sunny, uh Sunny's Package Store.
Sunny's is located at four twelve East Sixteenth Avenue.
This is the same thing, this is the final store that was in this operation, and again, made it on the twenty sixth, sold alcohol to an undercover, um, I. I don't have any issues.
Alright, yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, first of all, we are very sorry that under alcohol, underage sale happened at our store. And we are very concerned about this, and we have, we have taken the steps so that it doesn't happen again in the future. We have done the advance training to all our employees. We have updated our system so that when they scan any alcohol or tobacco items. There is a alert pops up on the screen, and they have to enter the barcode from the ID, then only the transactions can go through. Plus, we have put the signs all around the stores, no ID, no alcohol, no tobacco. And the lady who was, who sold the, my employee who sold the, that they made the sale. We, she told it's she's having the stress or something, that's why we have cut down her hours, working hours too, so that she can. Don't have any stress anymore and do that. And we are trying all our best to do it, and we make sure that it doesn't repeat again in the future. And we are really sorry about that, and we always try to work according to the law. She's working for four years. This is the first time she made a mistake.
How many other employees do you have?
We have other three employees, total four employees. This store is very old, but I bought it like one year ago. Yeah.
What is that hours?
From eight thirty to ten. Eight thirty AM to ten AM.
Eight thirty to ten?
Yeah. Monday to Saturday, and Sunday is twelve thirty to nine o'clock.
And if I heard you correctly, you said you put the signs up, you reduce uh employees.
Yeah, on the door, near the register, everywhere around the store, to make sure that they've. No ID, no alcohol, or no tobacco, like that sign, and we also have the system upgraded, so that whenever they scan the alcohol or tobacco. There is a alert pops up, and we have to enter the barcode, without that, we can't finish the transaction.
And uh, you cut employees' hours there for them in stress?
She made a mistake, she has to get something. Because she was working for. Because she was working for four hours, we considered it, that was her first mistake, that's why we didn't fire her.
She, how many hours does she work?
She works like, she used to work like thirty-five hours, now we reduce it to twenty, twenty-five hours.
A week?
A week.
Right, right, and, um, is that the only job she has, is she working another job?
No, I think she has only one job.
You're working with?
Me, that's, yeah, that's why we considered it.
Okay, um, and I'm just curious, because of stress and speaking of mental health here.
No, she is having some health issues, she has diabetes and like that.
Okay.
That's why she, she sometimes get nervous, or she's like that, that's why we, we wanted her to work too many hours, so, 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 that's why.
Okay. Got you, got you. Any other questions, concerns? Also, I, I would say for this, just also help your employee, even, because I, I believe in a mutual relationship, I, I don't work outside of mutual ally. Uh, and I'll be sort of quick, um, if we're not lining up, I, I would say probably also, if they have health conditions, and I'm not trying to tell you how to raise your business, because you said she was stressed, and this economy, if you cut hours, that financial stress may add more to her stress, so that's what I'm thinking, and, and what I would say to you, even if there, that thing was that you can, um, put inside there to help her manage her health or her stress, like for instance, you know, um, you know, you know, checking in where they say, making sure, you know, your checklist is, you check your medicine, that you have water, value, whatever it takes, to not be stressed and have her health conditions, or even that she's sitting there in a hot stool for when the store's not active, where she's not on her feet, so I believe those things you can, you know, balance.
Yeah, we allow them to sit, if they are like that, we allow them to sit, they can, if there's nobody, they can do whatever, they can, they take the drink or whatever, that's fine.
Right, right, okay. All right, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And again, I apologize, and we'll make sure it doesn't happen in the future, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you, um, any, um, following those questions, concerns, just get ready, close that public hearing. Just, uh, again, advise that we have thirty days to make a decision, or what have you, um, and so, um, you know, um, that's stated in the ordinance, not saying we'll take it for thirty days. And thank you all for coming here and, uh, giving us more context, thank you, Chief, for providing, uh, background information on it, all right. With that, do we have motion to close the public hearing?
Seven.
Seven.
It's been probably a minute, second, that we close this public hearing, all in favor, let it be known by both of us, aye.
Aye.
All right, public hearing closed.